Welcome to another episode of the Michelle Tafoya Podcast. I'm a big freedom of speech absolutist, really. People ought to be able to say whatever they want, no matter how unpopular it is. That is the bedrock of a free society, being able to say whatever you want, wherever you want, whenever you want. Now, there's that thing about yelling fire in a crowded theater, et cetera. Yeah, that's, we know, that's not really part of the deal, although I don't know that it's illegal. Anyway, our guest today is a mom who went to exercise her freedom of speech at a school board meeting. Now, what happened to her next can either scare you, or it can inspire you. And my hope is that it inspires you. Janet Robertson is next.
Welcome to the Michelle Tafoya Podcast.
So gender ideology has become this big thing in American schools. Ideology is not a science. So while kids are failing in reading and math and science and civics, they're learning all about the multitudes of genders that are available to them in this non-binary society we find ourselves in. Well, some parents are pushing back, including Janet Robertson. She lives in Benicia, California, which is in the northern part of the state. And she decided to speak to her school board about how she disagrees with this ideology being brought into lower schools, elementary schools, middle schools, even to a certain extent in high school, where certain things are being discussed now that a lot of parents are uncomfortable with. She spoke professionally, eloquently. She even got the notice of Elon Musk, which we'll show you a little bit later. But Janet Robertson is going to tell her story, and I hope it inspires more parents to rally around people like Janet, or even rally around people you disagree with, because that's what the First Amendment is all about. You'll want to hear her story. She's really a remarkable person. She is going to join us in a matter of moments. First, that dark spot on your face, or the liver spots on your hands, your neck, your chest, are those still bothering you? You can watch them disappear if you want to safely and quickly in three minutes. Introducing the GenuCell Dark Spot Corrector 3-Step 3-Minute Dark Spot Luxury System. And it does exactly what it sounds like. By using their Crystals, world famous microdermabrasion, before the dark spot corrector, and finishing with a touch of the collagen building GenuCell XV, you'll see the dark spots disappear before your very eyes instantly, smoothly, luxuriously, safely. What you're watching on the screen are real results in just a couple of minutes. I mean, look for yourself, it's incredible. But don't take my word for it. If you're not blown away with the results, you get 100% of your money back, no questions asked, free shipping, free returns. So go to genucell.com/michelle now. Say goodbye to the dark spots with the Dark Spot Treatment System, and that is genucell.com/michelle. And there is a little bit more. All three products are included in GenuCell's most popular package for August. So you get the GenuCell Bags and Puffiness Serum also included, all of it for 70% off. Experience the luxury and effectiveness of GenuCell. Order now and watch the dark spots go away. GenuCell.com/Michelle, G-E-N-U-C-E-L.com/Michelle with one L, genucell.com/M-I-C-H-E-L-E. Janet Robertson, a courageous and well-meaning mom. You're going to want to hear her story, and it is coming up right now.
Hello, I'm Janet Robertson. I have three children in the district, elementary school, middle school, high school. At the last meeting, my time to speak was cut short, and there was so much to say about the new sexual education curriculum. I realized the curriculum has already been approved. I also realized that Ms. Rice, who I incorrectly was referring to as a doctor last week, or last month, explained that only three families out of 4,500 students in Benicia voiced concern about the curriculum. Our family has also been told that we can simply have our children opt out of the sex ed classes if we have an issue with the classes. But I would like to say to you, who are entrusted to represent and make decisions for our children, and to the community that may be watching this video, that we have a big concern with what is now being taught to children as young as 10 in Benicia, such as, children are being asked to identify their pronouns, and this is now part of the 10-year-old curriculum. This forces a gender discussion beyond the scope of the state requirements and complicates an already overburdened classroom environment.
Janet Robertson, thanks so much for taking time to join us. I'm really curious about your story. You have three kids in school, so obviously you're one of many parents who is concerned about stuff that's getting taught in school. But what specifically made you want to go speak to the school board there in Benicia?
A great question, and thank you so much for sharing my story. And you're right, I have an elementary schooler, a middle schooler, and a high schooler. And so I pay attention to the curriculum that they're putting out. And they'll periodically, the school district will periodically alert parents that there's new curriculum to be reviewed. And I think, like most busy parents, very few folks really have time to delve into it. And when I saw that they had new sexual education curriculum, I decided, well, I'm really going to research this. I'm going to read every aspect of it, particularly since two of my children, actually all three, will be going into grades where this curriculum will be taught. And I was aware, just kind of generally, of the most recent decision of the school board to kind of eliminate any sort of gender language. So there's been a desire amongst the teachers and the staff, I guess, to kind of eliminate this idea of male and female. So as that pertains to sexual education, I thought, well, I'm interested to read this curriculum, because how on the earth can you teach sex ed without that concept? So I did, I read it, and it is true. They pretty much dropped any idea that there's male people and female people. Instead, for example, some of the curriculum will read that some bodies have testes, and some bodies have ovaries, without making the distinction that it's women, girls, females, that have ovaries, and men or boys, or masculine bodies that have testes. Basically, they've kind of made it androgynous. So they're teaching these kids that really you can have any kind of body you want. You just get to decide what your gender is, which is-
So in other words, you either have ovaries, or you have testes, but you can be whatever you want to be-
You can be whatever you want. So regardless of the equipment your body has, you can be whatever gender you'd like to be. So as a mom, you know, that's very confusing. For anyone who's been around small children, or even teenage children, it's, they're going through a lot of confusing things in life. To kind of teach something that's not medically accurate or scientifically true seems very dangerous, and very confusing to kids, particularly at the very young ages.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't, it seems to me like the, "Welcome to class, boys and girls", that is gone. That is like, you know, that's like an extinct phrase now. We're not allowed to say "boys and girls", we say "humans", we say "friends", we say "community members". And it's strange. Look, and this is not, you know, we're talking about, like you said, school-age kids, who, and we happen to know that there are two sexes. I mean, that's, that's been biology since the beginning of man, right? So what do you suppose is behind this, this focus, this goal of removing, removing girls and boys, and this, you know, binary, because they want, I guess, it's because they want kids to feel that they can be non-binary, right? I mean, what's behind this push?
So, that's a great question, and I've been so troubled by this, and kind of been researching it for several months now. And I think there's some truth to this idea from folks who are Marxists, not to get too, like, deep politically, but it makes a lot of sense to me, that this whole Marxist idea of tearing down our current foundation, tearing down the way the country is structured, in order to rebuild it in a Marxist way, is, I don't see any other really viable reason why they'd be doing this, other than that. So it seems very driven to cause confusion, to cause kids to kind of, to disrupt what the traditional values and beliefs have always been, in the hopes of building another type of government, possibly. So I know that might sound radical, but that seems to make sense to me.
Look, it's, you're not alone in this. And this is not something that's brand new. This has been kind of deeply embedded in leftism for a long time, and it's just, it's really kind of finally taken root after decades of trying to get it to take root. And the idea for people, when they hear Marxism, and they think, "Ah, I don't want to know that, I don't want to hear all these terms", basically what it does is it separates, it dissolves the family unit in favor of the government being in control of all, of people. And so that you don't have a mom and a dad, you have a birthing person, which drives me bananas, I'm sure it does you too, and a non-birthing person. And it's just, to change the language so radically has got to be confusing to kids, especially if they come from homes that really embrace the family unit, which to me is the, is the foundation of good communities. So you, you studied it, you were disturbed enough to go speak to the school board, which these days is, is kind of a risk, but you took that risk. I've watched your tape, we're going to include some of it in this, in this, in this podcast, and you were very polite and calm. You did not raise your voice. You did not use any terminology that I consider homophobic or transphobic. When you went in to speak, and I think you spoke twice, what was your, what was your expectation from the school board?
Yes, you're absolutely right. When I went to speak to the school board, it was important to me, I'd be professional and have researched my facts and speak reasonably. And you're right, I did speak twice. I'd gone a few weeks before they approved the curriculum, and ran out of time. They only give you a three-minute time period to speak. And during my first time, I was really hoping to appeal to them not to pass the curriculum. So by the time I got to the next school board meeting, they have them every few weeks, they'd already passed the curriculum, but I wanted to go on record as saying I didn't agree with the fact that they'd passed a lot of the nonsense that's in the new curriculum. But I agree with you, I feel like I was very reasonable with what I said, and absolutely not transphobic, or homophobic, or any of the things that happened after I spoke that I was accused of. So basically, after that meeting, some people in town decided to write to the local newspapers and to my company, where I work, and say that I'm a transphobe, and a bigot, and a homophobe. And they even went so far as to say I was a daughter of Hitler, and all these crazy things. And in fact, when I first read it in the newspaper, I was absolutely shocked the newspaper had printed it. It was two local papers. We have the Benicia Herald and the Vallejo Times Herald. And I could not believe they printed it. They had never called me, they don't know who I am, they never checked with me to see what my side of it is. They just kind of printed these letters saying that I'm all these terrible things. And it was almost laughable, if it weren't so insulting. I almost had a chuckle, because it was so absurd. And, but then when I saw they were writing to my company, and it was largely driven by a local group in town called the Progressive Democrats of Benicia. And they've since tried to distance themselves from this whole situation, saying, oh, well, it was just, in fact, it was their treasurer, who sits on their executive board, who wrote directly to my company. And they said, "Well, she's an individual member, she didn't do it at the behest of the club."
Oh, yeah. And, and, and people sitting in front of the CDC sign are not speaking for the CDC, they're speaking out their own personal-
Exactly.
I mean, that's, that's, she represents that, that group. Now, whether or not she's writing it, you know, on letterhead or whatever, is almost irrelevant. She clearly, so you see these letters to the editor, and then you find out, how did you find out that your company was being targeted by these letters as well?
I believe it was by accident that I ever even got a copy of the email. I was very fortunate that one of my colleagues, who happened to have gotten a copy of the email, that the treasurer of the Progressive Democrats of Benicia had sent, shared it with me. And then I started getting really nervous and worried, because I thought, wow, I love my job, I love the people I work with, this would be terrible if I am told by my company, I can't work there anymore, if they believe these lies. So I started talking to my local team leader, the manager of the area, and expressed my concern that, gosh, I'm not any of these things, you guys know me, you know I'm not transphobic or homophobic, and I just simply disagreed with this group, and now they're really coming at me. And so the response I got was, no, you're right, we, we know that you just went to speak at the school board meeting, we understand that. But Compass Corporate, so a little background, I'm a Realtor, and the company I had worked for is Compass. And they're actually a nationally-held company, a little different than a lot of real estate companies, where you would have individual franchises. Compass is actually national. And so all the Realtors that work for them, I believe they have 30,000 independent contractors that work for them, are 1099 employees, so we're all considered independent contractors, we're not actual employees. And so what that means is, all of our contracts are written in such a way that they can break the contract at any time, or we can break the contract at any time. And that becomes relevant in a minute. But, but anyway, so I'm talking to my local team, expressing how concerned I am that these letters are being written. They're telling me that Compass Corporate doesn't like the fact that these letters were written. You know, it's bad for business, whenever someone is going to accuse someone of being all these bigoted things. And so in the letter that the treasurer of the Progressive Democrats of Benicia wrote, she basically said to Compass, "If you don't disavow Janet Robertson, or make, make explanation for why you're employing a transphobe by May 1st, we're going to go public, and we're going to tell everyone that Compass employs a transphobe." And sure enough, on May 1st, I got a call from the regional director from corporate, telling me that I was no longer able to work as a Compass agent. And my heart just dropped. I said, "What?" And I know this man, he's, again, our regional director, he's aware of my production and my success. And I said, "But my, I'm doing great, my business is great, I earned a lot of money last year for you guys, for Compass, and how can this be?" And he said, "Oh, this has nothing to do with business." And I said, "Well then, why on the earth would you be telling, in essence, firing me, to the extent you can fire an independent contractor?" And he said, "You just can no longer do business under the name Compass, and we need to part ways." And he said, it's, I think his exact words were, "This past week has been a lot, but it has nothing to do with business." And then Michelle, shortly thereafter, actually that same day, apparently Compass called the Progressive Democrats of Benicia to confirm that they had gotten rid of me. Basically, in response to their threat that they would go public, they actually confirmed with them that, yes, we got rid of Janet Robertson. And then you can see on the website I put up, canceledinbenicia.com, you can see all kinds of people high-fiving each other about, "Oh, yeah, Janet suffered the consequences of her transphobia."
Oh, my God. This is America, ladies and gentlemen. Even if you are transphobic, it shouldn't come between you and your livelihood. And, you know, how you act, and if you want to go speak to a school board and express your opinions about curricula, that should be welcome anywhere. And, and like we said, and we're interspersing part of Janet's appearance in front of the Benicia School Board, because we want you to see how reasonable she presented herself. But clearly, this group put pressure on your company, and they felt like, you know what, let's just, let's just do the easy thing here, and let's not stand up for her, let's separate from her. And you know what? The bottom line is Compass is getting publicity either way, because now they are the company that got rid of you. And, and people can see that, and maybe some are high-fiving, some of us are saying, shame on them. You know, this is, this is not the reason to get rid of an employee. So what is your status now? What are you, what are you doing?
Oh, thank you for asking. But before I say, you said something so important, that we need to fiercely defend free speech. And just, just as you said, even if what I said had been transphobic, which it was not, but we still, as Americans, need to protect each other. Like, if your neighbor disagrees with you, that's okay. They should still be able to keep their job, they shouldn't have their house burned down, or be run out of town. All of us need to really defend particularly, maybe even the views that we do disagree with, just because that's what the foundation of our country is, that all of us get to have these views.
See, people that are high-fiving right now, that Janet lost her position with her company, it could just as easily be turned toward them someday. And that's what they don't seem to realize, that they themselves could be the target of this, if enough people want to, you know, scream and yell about them, and get them fired. I mean, we have to protect, as you very eloquently said, speech that we disagree with. Otherwise, free speech, it's, it's, it's gone. I mean-
You're absolutely right.
We're not all going to agree, that we're very clear on that right now in the United States of America. Across the world, we're not all going to agree, but we have to protect people's rights to state their beliefs. Gosh, Janet, this makes me so mad. All right, so you get released by Compass, let's remember that, folks. Maybe you, it affects how you'd like to do business with them in the future. Although, they have, you know, their responsibilities too. So you get let go. What happens to you and your family at this point?
So, so when this happened on May 1st, I was shocked. I couldn't believe it happened. I immediately thought, well, this has to be protected in America, there, there's no way I would lose my job. So I reached out to several attorneys, and the first thing they asked was, well, actually, their first reaction was, "Absolutely, this is, we are definitely going to get your job back, and what Compass did was wrong", until I explained that I was an independent contractor. And a lot of Americans are today. You've got Realtors, you've got Uber drivers, people who work for Amazon. There's a lot of people in America today who are independent contractors. And so I learned a lot, that really there's very few protections for independent contractors, even when the evidence shows very clearly, in my case, that I was released because of my opinion at a school board meeting. So that's something that I really, really feel should change. But to answer your question, I basically kind of went dark for several weeks. I was depressed, obviously. I was really sad about losing the job that I loved. It was hard to do any marketing when you're in sales, like Realtors are. You're constantly marketing and kind of putting your face out there, and I just kind of went underground, which is devastating to someone in sales, because you need to be constantly trying to earn. And it was tough, it was a tough summer. And so last week, or I guess it's been about two weeks now, I finally thought, well, I want to tell my story. If there is no legal remedy for me, if there's no way for me to protect myself legally, at least I can share what happened. And if nothing else, it can be a cautionary tale, but hopefully more of an inspiration for-
That's what I hope, yeah.
Yeah, to stand up and speak up and not be afraid. I feel like if more parents had gone to that school board meeting with me, it might have been a different result. Because I was the only mom who spoke out at that meeting, had they seen maybe 10 moms, or dads, or, or even a handful of people show up and say, "Hey, we disagree", I feel like it might have been a different result for me. So-
Do you know any parents that, that were on your side with this whole thing? Like, are there parents who were just afraid?
This has been so humbling. I've received such an outpouring of support. And I really kind of thought, if anything, I'd get some hate, because that's kind of what I'm used to over the summer. But it has been amazing. My phone, I had to turn it off, all my email filled up, my messages were full, with people saying, "We agree, and we're here, and we support you, and we agree with what you stood for." And a lot of families, it actually has been very weighing heavy on my heart, saying, "My children got caught up in this too. My kids are now part of this whole public school system, where the teachers are basically separating our children from us, telling them they're a different gender." It is amazing how pervasive this kind of gender ideology thing has gotten. I did not, I was not aware of that. And it breaks my heart for my fellow Americans, who, as you mentioned earlier, it seems like there's a very concerted effort to separate children from their families. And again, it feeds into that whole desire for power. When you take the family unit away, the government can get stronger. It's really very devastating.
It is. It's, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, but yes, this is pervasive. It, when you have schools that say they will not tell parents, and I, and I did an interview with someone for this podcast, who later said, "Can we not air the interview, because my relationship with my kid is so tenuous right now, and I don't..." And I felt awful for her. She had told me how her child, starting in, I think in middle school, decided, "I'm going to change my gender, and I'm going to change my pronouns." Nobody at the school told her, until she got a phone call one day, saying, "Your son", which was actually her daughter, "your son has been involved in this bullying thing." And she went, "I'm sorry, I don't have a son, you know, there. I'm sorry, and they gave the name, and she's like, "I don't know who you're talking about." Well, it wound up, because everything was done in secret, behind the parents' back. And, sorry, schools, sorry, government, you don't get to raise our children, we do. And so, is this sex education in Benicia, is it mandatory? Can you take your kid out of it?
So the state passed, I believe it's all under what they call the California Healthy Youth Act, which is a misnomer, to put it mildly. But I believe that there are several state requirements now mandating that schools introduce, it's under the guise of disease prevention, wherein they have to now teach the kids about oral and anal sex at the age of 12, presumably because those are ways that, for example, AIDS can be introduced to the body. And I'm thinking, are you kidding me? Like, my children are quite innocent, are really kind of just coming to grasp with sex, traditional sex, as it is, even what the meaning of that is, to introduce these other things. So to answer your question, there are some state mandates that the children must be taught, but we still in California do have a provision where you can opt your children out. So a lot of my detractors, people who have disagreed with me, have said, "Well, just opt your children out, what's your problem? Just take your kids out of school, or out of those classes." And, and while that may be an option, I'm also concerned, generally, as a mom who knows other children that my kids associate with, I mean, you get to know the kids in your neighborhood. No, no child should be listening to this horrible teaching.
Well, it's garb, it's, it's-
Yes.
It's, it's not the school's job. And, and I know, you know, everyone had their sex ed and all that stuff in junior high school, or whenever, middle school, whenever they had it. But there, I mean, as I learned it, it was, you know, girls have this, boys have that, there's, you're going to get a period, and yada, yada, yada. And it wasn't about all this ideology-
Exactly.
-surrounding multiple genders, right?
It's a difference between teaching science and biology-
Yes.
Which all children should learn. I mean, you need to know how mammals procreate. There's a difference between teaching biology and teaching this kind of gender ideology.
Yes.
You're absolutely right. This should have no place in schools.
Because it is ideology. Ideology is not a science, folks. It is not based on facts, it's based on ideas, which is why it's called ideology. So get it, why this even needs to be introduced as a form of education is, is beyond me. So you are, you're telling your story, and we're honored that you came and, and spent some time with us. What's, what's in the near future? Elon Musk tweeted about this, didn't he?
He did. I was, I woke up in the morning, so I, so I made my video. There's a parents group out of Sacramento, which has been wonderful, definitely advocates for those of us parents, who are trying to make sure we are actually raising our children, and not the schools. A parent group, and I believe they just started a new organization called Protect, I have to look it up, Michelle. It's a good group. But it started out as Students First California. Actually, it started as Reopen Schools California.
Oh, so it's back during the lockdown?
Yes. So this is when a lot of us as parents kind of started coming together and saying, "Hey, our kids should be in school, they should not have masks over their faces, they need to learn, they need to socialize." So it started with reopen California schools, and then became Students First, and now I believe it's Protect Kids California. But they're lovely and wonderful. And so one of their representatives had asked, could he put it on Twitter? And I said, "Sure", yeah, I'm not really on Twitter. And I said, "Go for it." And I woke up the next morning, and I saw I had been picked up by other outlets. Oh, Lips of TikTok actually reached out to me and asked-
Oh, did they?
Yes. And I was like, "Yes, of course. I know that Lips of TikTok has like 2.4 million followers", and I thought, "Well, that would be lovely. Thank you, please share my story." And so once it reached those, I think it's up to like 5 million views, or something crazy, all the combined Twitter accounts. But Elon Musk did indeed comment on it. My understanding is he wrote to Compass and said, "Did you really fire this person?" And an interesting thing about Compass, which actually disappoints me, so they put out a soundbite pretty much immediately, because they started getting a lot of feedback. And I appreciate that we, as Americans, do have the power to choose where we shop, where we list our houses. We can make decisions which do affect products for companies who decide to enter into this whole ideology nonsense. I don't know why Compass doesn't just focus on selling houses. Instead, why, why would they shut me down? So-
Well, they caved. They caved to a loud group, yeah.
They did. And so when, although I'm happy to see that we, as freedom-loving Americans, I think, are a louder group, because I think the feedback they've gotten from people saying, "Hey, a mom should be able to speak at a school board meeting", I think that that lobby has actually been stronger than this idea that they were afraid of being associated with a transphobe, which I am not. But I wanted to mention this. So Compass came out, and their statement was, "Oh, that person is just an independent contractor", and it was just their, their local team decided to dismiss her, distancing themselves. So that made me a little angry- distancing themselves. So that made me a little angry for a couple of reasons. One, 30,000 of their workforce, or yeah, 30,000 of their, um, employees are independent contractors and they are Realtors and across the nation. And so you can't just dismiss basically your bread and butter, all the people that are selling and, and representing you as people buy and sell houses. And then the other aspect of it is they tried to put it off on the local team. Why couldn't Compass come out and say, hey, we support free speech. We stand behind this mom or any mom in our company who wants to have an opinion about the curriculum, even if we disagree. We're an American company. We believe in free speech. We stand behind all of our independent contractors and employees to have an opinion.
Janet, had they done that, their business would have boomed. Had they done that, they would have gotten so much support. I think even from people maybe who disagree with your stance because they would have said, people would have gone, you know what? That's really reasonable. They're standing up for her because of free speech, the first freaking amendment, which, you know, and I think they would have done themselves a massive favor. Instead, they've got Elon Musk on X posting, did you really do this? Did you really do this? So, uh, that was powerful to me. And, and you are getting a lot of attention because of this. But I, I wonder about your livelihood. Are you going to be able to resume your profession?
So I'm coming back. You know, I'm, I'm trying to get my mojo back. Um, although I must be honest, at this point, I feel like Northern California generally, I've seen such a decline and in so many aspects beyond just this crazy gender ideology in schools, we don't, or out here, they don't really, uh, there's no law enforcement. Um, theft is not even theft anymore, as long as it's none under $950. I could walk up to the supermarket right now, walk out with a cartload of $900 worth of goods, and it's not even considered a crime. And then the legislature this summer passed another law stating that if the store tries to stop me from stealing, uh, the store can be criminally responsible for assault, I think, or something crazy.
It's insane.
It's insane. So.
Go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, so we're really focusing on relocating and looking at cities or towns that are more focused on American rights, that actually have law enforcement, uh, respect rule of law, uh, are patriotic. Um, people aren't afraid to wear an American flag on their shirt and they're proud to be Americans. And so we're kind of focusing on relocating at this point. But I know I'll land on my feet and I'm just sad for all the people who might not have the ability to relocate and our staff.
That is a very real problem. Like you, you, you have this option that maybe some other people who'd like to go don't have. Your kids, how, how did they deal with all of this? Cause I, I would imagine it brought some unwanted attention to them as, as kids.
Bless. Well, you know, having children, particularly, uh, a 12-year-old and a 15-year-old. I think my nine-year-old is more chill about it. He's not so concerned. He's out playing football and doing his things. But my 12-year-old and my 15-year-old girls, uh, like most teenagers, they're on their social media and they see comments. And it, it's been really devastating for the whole family. It's been very stressful. Um, I feel like they, just as normal teenage kids are worried and concerned. Um, I'm blessed that they're still supportive of their mom. It's, it's interesting, when you're living in a town of folks who may not have traditional views and you're more of a traditional person, you end up looking like the radical. So I think that my kids kind of see me as more of a radical. I'm like, no, actually I'm pretty mainstream and traditional. So that's been our experience.
Well, so maybe they think moms are radical and that's cool. What are your, I won't, I won't ask their names, but I, uh, this, when you, if you get a chance to play this for your girls, girls, you should be damn proud of your mama because what she's doing takes courage that very few people in America are willing to exert these days. So Janet, I applaud you. Uh, I hope that you and your family land, I know you will land on your feet. You're, you're a very grounded person. I, I'm sorry that you went through this. It's just, we are in a crazy time and you have been directly impacted by it. And, uh, so I wish you well as, as you move on and we'll, we'll keep in touch with you if that's okay.
I'd love that. And I'm grateful to you, Michelle. You were like one of the very first people who reached out before I had to turn my phone off. And I'm grateful that you were willing to share my story. It means a lot. So.
Well, it's, it's important. It's just another example of someone being brave enough to speak up for what they believe in and then being shunned by this, by this, I think minority opinion. Uh, it's, it's got to stop. Uh, Janet Robertson, we wish you the very best of luck. Remind people the website. It's.
Yes. Well, you can go to canceledinbenicia.com. Benicia is B-E-N-I-C-I-A, canceledinbenicia.com. And then I also have beniciafreedom.org, which you can also find all the links and the information.
Great, great. Well, we will continue to plug those and I appreciate your time. And I, like I said, I wish you the very best because you, you really, I, I know your intentions are very, very good. Uh, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
And as always, I end my podcast with these two, uh, phrases, be brave like Janet has been and do good. And we will see you next time. Thanks for listening.
We are alarmed that gender identity is now being discussed in math classes. This takes time from core learning and does not benefit the students or our community. Teaching kids that there isn't any standard or truth and that you can believe anything you want to believe is not scientifically accurate or medically correct. For example, the notion that a girl can decide to be a boy, or a boy can decide to be a girl is not true and should not be taught. The new curriculum teaches that individuals can decide if they're male or female, regardless of anatomy, does not explain that a boy cannot menstruate and a girl cannot impregnate someone. This is not scientific or medically accurate. Our 10-year-olds will now be taught that they can receive puberty blockers to prevent their body from going through changes that make them uncomfortable. All humans are uncomfortable during adolescence. To teach vulnerable children that a lifetime of dependence on medical care is a viable option is completely unacceptable and evil, frankly. The new curriculum encourages gender confusion, not gender clarification. All parents should question how this is helpful, scientifically sound, or medically accurate. 12-year-olds will now be taught about oral and anal sex, 12-year-olds. So I get a little emotional about this because I think that's wrong. Um, the ed code 51933 requires that instruction and materials should be appropriate for use of pupils of all races, genders, sexual orientations, and ethnic and cultural backgrounds. Teaching children about oral and anal sex violates this law, since several cultures would not find this teaching appropriate. When we asked, we were told the reason the curriculum removes the idea of male and female was to be more inclusive, but no longer include, or no longer identifying females as having ovaries and males as having testes is not scientific, not medically accurate, and not true. It's nonsense. It's not a choice. People are not gender fluid and to teach our children, this is not okay. Um, we're appalled that the school district has adopted this curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you.
If anybody wants information on where to find this information in the curriculum, I've researched it very thoroughly. I'm happy to provide that.